He was, like I was saying, he was trying to find that his hook was good. Say we weren't given enough time.
Okay, I'm gonna call this Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners Special Budget Meeting. This is Wednesday, February 19th. It's three o'clock. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Here.
Rennie?
Here.
Max Bauer?
Here.
Lathrop?
Excused.
Inman?
Here.
Limko?
Here. Next, we have the first public comment. Is there anybody that's gonna wanna have public comment? Then I'm gonna dispense with the rea-- oh, you are? Okay, then read the rules, please.
Okay. Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following Board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the Board. Members of the public wishing to comment shall raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized, and shall not address the Board until called upon by the chairperson.
Having heard the rules of public comment, please introduce yourself.
Mitch Foster, 11340 Lake Shore Drive in Fife Lake, here on behalf of the Village of Kingsley. I'm the village manager there, and also on behalf of Civic Center South Authority down in the south area of the county. Really, I just wanted to come here and introduce myself to all of you. I haven't had the chance to stand up and speak yet. And the second piece is I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of the importance of Parks and Rec, since that is the budget piece being discussed today. As article after article, legislative agenda after agenda comes down from the state and federal government placemaking and its importance in communities and community development is huge. Parks and Rec has a direct impact on that, whether you look at the recent conference that was held in Traverse City and the impact that had on our local community, or you look at the parks that we have around the area. Civic Center South itself represents enough communities in the south area of the county, as well as northern Wexford County, to really make a big impact. I was contacted today by the YMCA to try to host stuff at our facility because they liked the way that it's set up. These are facilities that, at a cost compared to other things, are much cheaper and provide a bigger public benefit, not only health-wise, but economic development-wise. So I really would like to, you know, implore you all to continue to think about the way you look at Parks and Recreation, not just as stewards of the facilities, but also as programmers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else public comment? Chuck?
Good afternoon. My name is Chuck Korn, 4111 Summer Hill Road, Traverse City, Michigan, and thank you again for your good work. I know it's a lot of work. There are a number of businesses in Garfield Township. I don't know about the rest of the townships that offer ballet classes, jujitsu, gymnastics. It is, in fact, private industry who provides most of the recreational opportunities in this county. I appreciate the pool, and I don't think we should ever close the pool. And I wish somebody on this board would say, "We don't want to close the pool." Any of you would say that, please? Yes, ma'am?
We don't want to close the pool.
Thank you.
Charles?
This is public comment.
Okay. I don't want, he asked a question. "I don't want to close the pool without an acceptable alternative."
Thank you very much. But in the meantime, there are a lot of people who are in business to provide recreational opportunities in this area, and I hope you consider that they're paying the taxes that pay for the programs that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comment? Help yourself.
Hi, I'm Kathy Coffin Shear at 415 West 7th Street, Traverse City, Michigan. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. In regards to the pool, I hope there is no alternative. My alternative, and I've spoke at the last Parks and Rec meeting, was to, is we will be filled to the gills if we could program more, add more programs to that facility, and continue, as a county entity, add more programs for our public use for kids, families, all different kinds of recreation. And quite frankly, the more program we have, the more programs, the more people you add, the more, the more monies you, the money you do make, and the more revenue that is, that is made. And I don't think the, I don't think the pool is, is programmed as, as much as it could be, and there are, and with the building of the Y, the Y is gonna take up part of, part of what the constraints are in terms of some things, but there are certainly a lot more things that we can continue to do to support Parks and Rec and Jason and all of his philosophies. Thank you.
Any other public would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Departmental budget discussions, the Drain Commissioner has canceled, so he will not be making the presentation, so we're gonna go directly into Parks and Recreation. Jason, if you could introduce your board members that are here in the audience, I would appreciate that, too.
Well, I'd like to introduce the President of our Parks and Recreation Commission, Elisa Kropa.
Okay.
I'm Jason Jones, your county's Parks and Recreation Director. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come out today and discuss more about our county Parks and Recreation budget for 2014. As I was going through some of these figures, and actually, before I even really get rolling with this presentation, I wanna talk about something that wasn't in the paper today. When Mike called, Mike Walton called me yesterday, I mentioned to him that I appreciated the clear questions that were identified by this County Board of Commissioners in order for each commis, or each department to come up here and try and give some type of apples-to-apples comparison. So I just wanted to compliment the Commission for being very clear in what you guys are asking for, and I think, as my presentation goes on today, I've answered each of these questions. I've rearranged it a little bit. I know that time is of the essence, and there's been a scheduling change today, and you guys have another meeting this afternoon. So I've moved some things around because I, but I did wanna be able to present information related to all of our parks, because we do have some really positive trends going on in the majority of our parks. That information's in front of you. I printed off hard copies of my presentation, and based on that, I guess I'll just get rolling. As we were, as I was preparing for this presentation, one of the things that our department's never done is we've never done a firm study of the number of park users that we have that visit our 1,500-plus acres of parkland. So as we went through this, I spent about a week contacting our user groups and finding out from them what they know about the number of users that they have that utilize our facilities. In total, the users that we can account for, and these are simply the active users of our parks, we can account for 744,562 park visitors. I know your question asks for, "Who are our customers?" The way our department works and the way our financing is set up, for every person that, if, if one person comes to our parks five times, or one person swims in our pool five times, we have to add disinfectant to that pool five times. We have to provide customer service five times. We have to have maintenance five times for that one person that comes in. These 744 folk, 744,000 folks represent those visitors. So for instance, Kathy spoke a moment ago. She's at, you know, I don't think we counted Kathy because of her relationship with Parks and Recreation, but if she were a swimmer that came 14 times throughout the course of the year, we would've counted her 14 times. So I wanna be just completely upfront, so there are no questions from the Commission about the validity of that 744,000 figure. Keep in mind, these are active visitors to the parks. It's hard for us to count the number of passive, the passive park users. It's hard for us to count the number of people that may decide on a Sunday afternoon to go out walking, to go out hiking at, at the Whitewater property. We don't have figures for that. So our passive park users, we don't have figures for those. I tried digging up some type of universal statistic for the number of people we may miss in our counts. I couldn't come up with one, but three-quarters of a million people from our five-county region is a pretty staggering figure in and of itself. Your next question is, "How many are served and at what cost?" Since we're talking about the 2014 budget, the figure that I'm basing my, my discussion today on is $318,613. That's the investment that our department has asked you to make into our department to provide these services to members of our community. The allocation represents 38% of our total revenues. The other 62% of our revenues, we generate from user fees, from rentals, and, well, user fees and rentals. That means that general fund allocation, your investment to our Parks and Recreation Department, in total, is 43 cents per visitor. So every time Kathy comes to swim at the pool in her 14 times, each time she comes in, you're, you're investing 43 cents into her visit. Why are these services, the next question is, "Why are these services important?" I can talk all day long about why these services are important. I can find all kinds of statistics, and I can find all kinds of studies and things like that. The six that most hit home here in our community are very relevant to what's going on nationally. Our Parks and Recreation Department, we provide physical health, mental health, social functioning, youth development, environmental impact, and economic impact benefits. I know Commissioner Rennie was concerned about the amount of money that went into the budget for economic development in 2014. Commissioner, I'm asking you for $318,000 in investment in economic impact. Why are these services important? I know a few of you attended the Michigan Recreation and Park Association Conference that Mitch mentioned a few moments ago. Our keynote speaker was a guy named John Crompton. He's a legend, I guess you could say, in the Parks and Recreation industry, and he's actually identified these 19 benefits of Parks and Recreation. I'm not gonna get into the details, and to be honest with you, I've not taken the time to study every single one of them. These are a little more esoteric, but I have the, or I have the data, if any of you are interested, to show you how each of these are a benefit to our community through Parks and Recreation. I also wanted to, I kind of added a question. I wanted to provide a context, some context about the Parks and Recreation budget and how it's related to, just, I guess, some context of what's happened with our budget over the past four or five years. With this portion of my presentation, I'm gonna discuss budget, budget numbers between 2009 and 2013. Between that, in that amount of time, our general fund allocation was actually decreased by the Board of Commissioners by 49%. There are three other funds that are comparable to ours. Over that same period of time, their appropriation actually increased by 4%. That being said, that's, that's put extra emphasis on our revenues and how we do business in Parks and Recreation. Since 2000, between 2009 and 13, our revenues have actually increased 7% every single year, on average. Since 2009, our expenditures have increased as well, but they've only, they've only increased it 2%. So while our department's trending towards greater financial sustainability with our revenues growing faster than our expenditures, the point I wanna drive home with this con, with this contextual picture is, while we're doing better in Parks and Recreation, we're not able to grow as quickly as the general fund allocation's been cut over the past several years. What that's done since 2009 is that's forced Parks and Recreation to utilize more of its own fund balance, and I know that there's been discussion at this level, it may not have been with this term of Commissioners, about the necessity of Parks and Recreation to have its own fund balance, and I think that's a discussion for stronger minds, other than me, at a different time that I'm not here. But what that's done to our fund balance since 2009 is it's depleted it to the point that at the end of 2014, Parks and Recreation will have zero fund balance. You've asked about changes in legislation. There's not a tremendous amount of legislation, significant legislation that's coming down the pike for Parks and Recreation. I don't know if any of, were any of you in attendance last night's public hearing about the trust fund bill? There is discussion that House Bill 5210, introduced by Representative Schmidt, may sunset an arbitrary land cap on the trust fund, but how that would impact our department is that would impact the availability for additional trust fund dollars for projects we would go out for, or grants we'd go out for. It would not impact our overall operating budget. Since we're on the topic of legislation, I wanted to identify something I'm gonna bring up a little bit later in our, my presentation. Twin Lakes has seen a rapid decrease in its amount of, in its revenue since 2008. It's because of state legislation that we've, that we essentially lost our number one, our number one revenue stream for Twin Lakes, which was overnight, overnight camps. Because of state regulations with how camps are funded, it created such a burden for the numerous organizations that utilized our facility that they've stopped coming to our facility. A few of them have pared back the date, the number of days that they're involved in day camps, but it's hit our, it's hit our park and hit our park's finances very significantly, and we've not been able to make up for that. Our Parks and Recreation is doing, Commission is doing a good job in leading the charge for developing business plans at Power Island, and right now, we're developing, we're starting the process for Twin Lakes. I'll talk, I'll touch on that later, but we are trying to make up that difference in finding a different opportunity to increase the revenues out at Twin Lakes, to restore them back to the numbers they were back in 2008 and prior years. Something that is interesting, and it's not necessarily legislation, but something from the Governor's Office is the discussion, and several of you know more about this than I, related to prosperity regions, and northwest Michigan is actually poised because of the, because of several things that you're all very aware of, but because of the collaborative opportunities and how we've been thinking outside the box, not just in our department, but all of the Parks and Recreation providers in our region, our department, or, excuse me, our region is being looked at as a leader for developing better recreation programming across the entire prosperity region versus just looking from a county, or township, or village perspective. That's something that our department is working with the Council of Governments, Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy, the Department of Natural Resources, and the Michigan Recreation and Park Association to showcase the leadership in this region for the development and, and future planning within the prosperity regions for Parks and Recreation. Demographic changes. I'm gonna focus on, I'm gonna focus on predominantly on young professionals, although, when I get a little bit further in my slides, I'll mention the, the similarities between the needs for young professionals and the needs for baby boomers moving to our community. With the Chamber of Commerce, their young professionals, they did, they did a survey of their young professionals. The young professionals mentioned natural beauty as the number-one reason that Traverse City has a competitive advantage over other regions. Activities related to outdoor activities, recreational activities, came in third on that list. When asked what should be done to preserve Traverse City and its competitive advantage, the young professionals identified keeping the public bay views open, as well as waterfront parkland open. Just to kind of identify for the Commission, we have, Maple Bay has a half-mile of beach frontage on East Bay. We have the Boardman River that runs, runs along, where we have the Nature Education Reserve that run, has the Boardman River running through it. We have Power Island that, quite honestly, has an entire shoreline made up of, of West Bay. So that type, that, that indicator is directly related to our department. Talking about strengths that should be leveraged, they're talking about promoting healthy activities, healthy lifestyles, and physical fitness. Healthy lifestyles and physical fitness, those are things that happen in the parks that I'm asking you to invest in. According to the Michigan Municipal League, and I'm just gonna read this, these couple of quotes, I don't like reading word-for-word my PowerPoints, but this is something that needs to be driven, it needs to be exemplified. "We know how, we know now that cities, states, and regions in the coun, in the country that are doing well and investing in themselves, creating places that people wanna live in. Parks and Recreation-related services are near the top of the list as far as why people choose to live in certain locations." Communities must ask themselves, this is by another gentleman, "Communities must ask themselves what potential residents are looking for. Now, economic development is all about place, and that's where trails, parks, and recreational facilities come in." This is discussion moving towards these demographics are moving us towards this new economy, this new global economy, where baby boomers in the 24- to 35-year-old market are looking for quality of life, looking for proper quality-of-life indicators, including parks, recreation, and natural resources, in order to move into economy, or move into a new region, bring their businesses, bring their families, and make a living in those communities. That 24- to 35-year-old demographic, I'm just outside of that, but that 24- to 35-year-old segment, I don't know if, if this has been brought up with this Commission. They don't care if they've got jobs in their degrees. They care about the quality of life that they have in the community that they live in, and that's what drives their decisions to move where they move and spend money where they spend it. So Parks and Recreation are key to ensuring that quality of life and having those folks move here, so it is very specifically an economic impact, or we have, we do impact the economy here locally. You've also asked about potential revenue increases and how much would it generate? These are three ideas that I've brought up in some of our past budget, two ideas that I've brought up in our past budget meetings, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but parks and recreation go together because recreation helps pay for parks. My suggestion, or my suggestion for how we could increase revenue is, instead of raising fees carte blanche that impacts everyone, let's start gaining new fees. Let's start gaining new revenues coming from new programs. I did a very quick and dirty survey of five or six other Parks and Recreation Departments throughout, throughout the state of Michigan, and came up with this range of figures for the amount of revenues that are associated with having a recreation programmer on staff. The lowest that I came up with was $69,378. The most expensive was, I think, $348 was the total. I do have to let this Commission know that that $300,000 figure is typically related to a sports programmer that operates all of the youth sports in the community, including soccer, football, baseball, basketball, hockey, softball, lacrosse, all of those field sports that we're, our community is fortunate enough to have, offered by our partner organizations, organizations that utilize our facilities, but there's still a need in our community for recreation programs. Even with $69,000, that's $69,000 to help move us, to help move the needle towards better financial sustainability for Parks and Recreation. One of the things that also needs to be brought up with that, that type of revenue, if we were to bring on a recreation programmer, we wouldn't make $70,000 the first year. Developing recreation programs and successful ones takes several years of implementation. Run it the first time, fix the problems, run it the second time, see if you have any different problems, run it the third time, and you're gonna be a greater success. So those figures are figures that wouldn't be created overnight, but if we're in this marathon, instead of this being a sprint, that $69,000 figure is a very achievable figure, and it could be even higher than that. We've talked about increasing fees. For every 1% we increase our fees, we increase our revenues by $3,146. So if this Commission, if this Commission provides a target for us to hit, and you say you wanna hit those via fees, you know, we could, we figured that out based on, based on that factor. One of the things that needs to be identified is our Parks and Recreation Commission's budget for this year already, already includes a 5% increase in fees. At our November 14th meeting, we had several users of the swimming pool. We had, I think, upwards of 170 folks here to support Parks and Recreation, and I think Commissioner Thomas raised his hand, or asked the, the group whether they'd be willing to increase their fees, and I think overwhelmingly, this Commission saw that, that those folks are, would be willing to do that. Even if we increase our fees, we'll still have a competitive fee schedule in comparison to the YMCA as they open. I'm gonna talk about this a little bit later, but we have, I have had discussions with the new aquatic manager at the YMCA about how our two facilities could work together, and I don't, I'm not gonna be so bold as to say this is the, I can't say that this is an official statement from the YMCA, but Harper, from her perspective, the YMCA built a pool in our community because we needed a second pool in our community. We can continue our business planning. As I mentioned a moment ago, we've, we've completed the business plans for Power Island and the Parks and Recreation Commission. There's a committee that's working on developing one for Twin Lakes now. As part of that business planning process, we found if we could implement all of the ideas associated with that business plan, our parks, excuse me, Power Island would see an additional increase of $16,148 in revenue. That doesn't make up the, and that would be in its first year. It doesn't make up for the gap that I'm gonna talk about a little bit later between revenues and expenditures in Power Island, but it's a step in the right direction. Because our, because our parks and our facilities are so diverse in the number of, or the people they serve, as well as the diversity of the types of facilities offered at each of them, you know, it's hard to say that every, every business plan is gonna generate an additional $16,000. It's gonna depend on the content of that plan. Of course, the devil's in the details. But continued business planning is, is a display that the Parks and Recreation Commission is committed to developing different ideas and thinking outside of the box and developing ways for our department to be more financially sustainable versus coming to the parks, or coming to the Board of Commissioners every year and asking for your investment in the Next question you've, you've asked, and I'm gonna get through all nine of your questions, and then if you wanna talk about each of the parks, we can talk about each of the parks. You've asked about the potential for outsourcing or merging with other entities. From the lens that I wear, if you're asking me about outsourcing, it sounds like privatization. The potential for traditional privatization is very little to none. The colleagues that I associate with throughout the state of Michigan, we've, we've, successful privatization has not worked or been attempted. So to find an organization that's out there that's willing to take on our Parks and Recreation Department as a whole would be a significant challenge, and I don't believe that there's a organization out there that would be willing to take on our parks lock, stock, and barrel. Facility, there's been discussion, I know, at this board about combining Parks and Recreation and Facilities Management. I work closely with Danny Brown, and their department doesn't have the organizational capacity to manage and administer Parks and Recreation as well. In fact, one of the things that I think has been presented to this Commission in the past, when we've talked about the merging of Parks and Recreation and Facilities Management, we initially talked about that in, in terms of Facilities Management handling Power Island and Twin Lakes by eliminating the caretakers of those two facilities. If you did that, your savings would only be 1,400 bucks. Alternative, other alternative ways, you've asked for a, a potential solution that I have for the parks, or for the Board of Commissioners, is to explore the formation of a Parks and Recreation Authority. It wouldn't be wise for me to sit here and say, "A Parks and Recreation Authority that does X, Y, Z and is funded by, funded by, by A." Because a recreation authority is the, kind of the pinnacle of collaboration amongst different governmental, governmental entities that wanna provide services to the community. So it wouldn't make sense for me to sit here and say, "This is exactly what we're gonna do," because if the Village of Kingsley's not interested in the type of recreation authority we are, they're gonna be out. It's something that needs to come or grow organically from each of the organizations to discuss potential for a recreation authority. Recreation authorities can be created in a variety of different forms for a variety of different reasons. There's one in, up by, up by Marquette, and it is a trail authority, specifically developed amongst, I think it's eight or 10 townships to create one linear trail into the city of Marquette. St. Clair County has an interesting authority where they have a Parks and Recreation village that goes to the county. 50%, I, I believe, 50% of it stays with County Parks and Recreation, but the other 50% is distributed to each of the local units of government within the county based on a per-capita rate. So it funds Parks and Recreation, that's the, that's the limit to their collaboration. They may work together periodically, but they're not bound to work together because of the Recreation Authority. That's a possibility. Recreation authorities can exist without a village. You know, I'm afraid that when discussion has come up about Parks and Recreation authorities, that when I bring that up in front of this Commission, possibly even the Parks and Recreation Commission, they automatically assume that I'm talking about money, money, money. Commission, they automatically assume that I'm talking about money, money, money. There are collaborative ways that a Parks and Recreation Commission can, or Parks and Recreation Authority can come together that may not generate new taxes, but may create other collaborative opportunities for not just county services to be provided, but possibly county and township, county and city, county and village, township and village. There are ways that this can work, and we have a couple of great examples with Garfield Township, and the city of Traverse City, and as well as the Recreation Authority in South County. The interesting thing about a recreation authority here in our local community, Land Information Access Association has some of the best knowledge with one of their employees who's a statewide, I always like to make this joke, he's a statewide authority on authorities, in Harry Burkholder. I've spoken with Harry, and he would be interested in, in helping, and I can't put Leah on the hook, but they may be interested in helping explore the opportunities for better collaboration through, or leaning towards a Parks and Recreation Authority. I think your most poignant question was, how would, how would I implement, how would, how would we implement a general fund budget reduction, and what impact would that reduction have upon services? I am assuming you've asked that, asked me that as your Parks and Recreation Director, and these are the suggestions that I have for the commission. I would suggest that the Parks, that the Board of Commissioners changes our departmental staffing plan related to Easling Pool to be exclusively on-call slash part-time staff. The reason I suggest that is it would save our department $72,231 annually without negatively impacting the services to our community. In fact, by having on-call or part-time staff here during those hours, we have a very high potential to actually increase the number of services to members of our community. The second thing that I'm going to bring up, and this is something that, as I mentioned a moment ago, these questions have been asked of me as the Parks and Recreation Director, they've not been asked of the Board of Commissioners. And what I'm about to suggest is something I suggest because the contact, I guess what I've gathered from the discussions you've had about your budget, is what can be done without, with minimizing the impact to the average citizen within Grand Traverse County? The reason I, and that's the reason I bring this up, is this is my suggestion because it would minimally impact users of our parks. And my suggestion is to eliminate the Parks and Recreation Commission. Commission has $13,325 in direct costs associated, and there's $16,619 related to staff costs for meetings and working with the Parks and Recreation Commission. That's a total savings of $29,944. The responsibilities of the commission could be handled by the county administrator, and it doesn't, I kind of put myself out on the line here because I'm telling our Parks and Recreation Commission President, this is my recommendation, and I'm asking our county administrator to take on more responsibility. Puts me in a bad situation, but this is an opportunity to minimally impact the citizens and the users of our parks in making some changes that could save some of the general fund allocation. This would make me an employee to the county administrator that would be comparable to the Director of Facilities Management and the Director of the Health Department, two departments that have similarly, even more so, quite honestly, complex budgets and issues that are similar to the Parks and Recreation Commission, or, excuse me, Parks and Recreation Department. And those two department heads, the Facilities Management and the Health Department, answer directly to Dave Bendah versus answering to the county administrator as well as a Those two, these two changes, the, the changing of the staffing plan in the Parks and Recreation Commission represented decrease of $85,556 in expenditures, those are direct savings. The $16,619 related to the personnel costs would not be a direct savings to Grand Traverse County, but would be, would be staff hours spent developing other programs, working on other projects, or working to make our, continuing to make our Parks and Recreation Department more efficient. Then there's the question, and this is the question I think Parks and Recreation in a municipal setting has always battled, and it's a tough one. And it's, it's kind of, it's a tough thing to answer because Parks and Recreation is not a service that's mandated by state law like a few of the departments here. But it's an indispensable service, and it's an indispensable service that stated earlier, positively impacts physical and mental health, social functioning, youth development, environmental and economic impact to our communities. If we want to step into the new economy, Parks and Recreation is the best place to invest your funds. Eliminating a Parks and Recreation Service would eliminate recreational opportunities for our entire region, most directly affecting those 700, 444,562 park users. It'd send a message throughout the state that a key characteristic of our community, the importance of Parks and Recreation, is declining. We're one of the few communities in our state that are growing. Elimination of our department would send a clear message that we're not welcoming of those quality of life issues that'll usher in that new economy. A few months ago, actually, I think this first came up with the Board of Commissioners, I don't know, four or five years ago, and it was rehashed just, just a few weeks ago, about what programs each department offers the community. Years ago, it was said that our department offered three programs, Park Operations and Management, Recreation Programs and Facilities, and Parks and Recreation Commission Support. Those are, yeah, those are, those are programs, but it'd be more easily, it'd be more digestible if we looked at this, as the programs we offer, we don't offer programs, we offer the parks. Commissioner Max Bauer stated, we have a landlord mentality, we provide the parks, other people provide the programs. We still have the costs and the resources associated with those parks, we could treat the parks like a program. Each of the ones listed here, those, those nine facilities, those parks or facilities, have their own budget activity. So I'm going to talk about each of those for just a moment. Parks and Recreation Commission, for several reasons, Parks and Rec, for a variety of reasons, Parks and Recreation Commission activity in our fund is very unique. It's a fiduciary activity that funnels in the fund balance that we utilize on an annual basis, as well as the general fund allocation. Because of that general fund allocation and fund balance, this is always a revenue-positive activity within our fund. Between 2009 and 2013, as I mentioned earlier, the revenue in that activity decreased by 46%. The Civic Center, Civic Center hosted 302,108 visitors of that 744,000 that I mentioned earlier, that we can count. You know, we don't, we can't count the people that come walk their dogs or throw frisbees with their dogs out in the open, out in the, the multipurpose field. We tried to count all of the skate park users, but the folks that come in before and after hours, we can't quite catch them, so these are the number of people that we, that we can count. In 2014, with the general fund allocation that's been requested of this board, that will support 54% of the expenditures for a total of $100,000, $107,67. The trend at the Civic Center is that our revenue, expenditures have increased by 15% between 2011 and 2013. I've taken into consideration, for the remainder of my presentation, 2011 figures to 2013. For the past three years, those, our revenues have increased, excuse me, our expenditures have increased 15%, while our revenues have increased by 22. So it's a positive trend that we're seeing, that's also led to a 40% decrease in reliance on the general fund since 2009. So things, Civic Center are moving in a very positive direction for us. It's slow, by only growth by, relatively speaking, 7%, but it is moving in a positive direction. Maple Bay, this is a good deal for them. Maple Bay hosted 10,000 visitors. The general fund will contribute zero, because Grand Traverse County doesn't budget any funds from Parks and Recreation for Maple Bay in 2014. Just to remind some of the commissioners, I know a few of you are new, Maple Bay is our most recent purchase of a park, purchased in 2002, and the two big figures here are the $6.8 million from the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund, and the $1.3 million from the Regional Land Conservancy, and the donations from, from the previous owners. Easling Pool, looking through some of these figures and trying to figure out the number of users we have coming to each of our facilities, and then kind of figuring out the trends of where each of our different facilities are moving over the past three years and over, since 2009, some of these things were surprising. There were things that I knew, but I never took the time to quantify. So this was actually a good exercise to see where we're at, and I think some of this, some of this presentation will go to the Parks and Recreation Commission at tomorrow night's meeting. In 2014, general fund will support 13%, only 13% of Easling Pool. There's a lot of criticism about how poorly Easling Pool's doing, but the general fund allocation to Easling Pool is only 13%. Between 2009 and 13, those expenditures increased, they did increase, but they increased by 6%, while revenues have increased by 62% in the Easling Pool. That's a very positive trend that's resulted in a 61% decrease in use of general fund allocation for the Easling Pool since 2009. In fact, 2013 was a record year for revenues in Easling Pool at $304,951. I shared this with our pool staff on Sunday when we had a staff meeting, that that $304,951 figure is attributed to our pool staff and the dedication that they have for ensuring that our facility runs properly, that we have the proper customer service, and that they welcome and properly teach adults and kids the lifetime activity of swimming. So they need to be commended, I wanted to do it here today, I was able to do it on Sunday, but that's because of the work that they've done. Obviously, you know, you've heard about all the things, and you've heard over the past few weeks, you know, all of the different organizations that, organizations that Easling Pool hosts within our community, the Breakers, the Master Swim Program, the Coast Guard, TCAP's High School Swim Team. A new thing for us is the freshman water safety program. That's something that we've done to try and increase the awareness and understanding of the dangers associated with open water to our community members. As I mentioned earlier, as the YMCA prepares to open, we've had discussions with their aquatic director about potential partnering, and how we can work together to provide greater opportunities within our community, something that I've heard time and again from this commission, something that's been brought up by County Parks and Recreation Commission, but something that our department is, is very interested, and I, as your director, are very interested in working with, because it's important to me to ensure that recreation is a viable option for everyone, and that people are out having that active, healthy lifestyle. Swimming's a great example of that, because it is a lifelong activity. Here, I don't know, I don't know how well you guys can read this, but it is in your packet, this is a trend line, the red, the red line is the expenditures in Easling Pool, the blue line is our revenues between 2009 and 2013. Next up is Power Island. Power Island hosted 39,194 boaters, which that seems like a staggering figure, and I wish I could say all 39,194 of those folks set foot on Power Island and gave us money for doing so, but I can't say that.
Were they boats?
That's boat, that's the number of boaters, that's the number, that's the number of people on the boats.
Okay.
Yep, we don't, not 39,000 boats. This is a figure that was monitored by our park ranger and his wife that live out on Power Island. They monitored, monitored this over the vast majority of 2011. In 2013, we also hosted 1,300 campers and user groups, and, excuse me, and we had user groups that totaled 238 people. So total, we can count for 40,777 visitors to the island. Those folks that come out on the boat, I was, I'm hard-pressed to say that they're, they're visitors to our island, but I have to include them in this presentation, because if that island weren't there, and it weren't a county park, would those boaters have any place to go? You know, if this is their form of recreation, they're looking for a place to go, and it's a big deal to get out to Power Island and enjoy yourself. I know a couple of our commissioners have gone out there and may go out there on a regular basis, but it's, this is, this is some people's form of recreation. In 2014, the general fund will support 65% of expenditures for a total of $25,000. Power Island has been a challenge for us over the past few years, with improvements that are required for us to make in order to certify the campground, and the future campground that the business, that the business plan for Power Island calls for being developed on the southeast side of the island, as well as the Adirondack structures that the Parks and Recreation Commission have identified in that business plan. We've had some challenges with that in 2012, or, excuse me, in 2000, yeah, 2012 and 2013. We are budgeted, as part of our 2014 budget, to wrap up those, those, wrap those up and actually have a well-drilled on Power Island, in order for us to gain that certification that's necessary to have more than four campsites on the island. Next up is the Nature Education Reserve. Nature Education Reserve is a little bit different, because we have a, we have a contract with the Grand Traverse Soil Conservation District, and I think they were in last week or the week before to give their presentation. But what we do, in our contract with them, is they actually manage the 405 acres of the Nature Education Reserve for a total expenditure of $65,752. So to give you some context, the Civic Center is 45 acres, the Nature Education Reserve is 400 acres. If you were to break it down into full-time equivalents, I would, I would guess that you could be easily five full-time equivalents for managing the 45 acres at the Civic Center. Mind you, the quality of care at the Nature, or the Civic Center is greater, but the point I'm trying to get across to this commission is that $65,752 is a bargain for the 100% management of the, or for the administrative, administration and management of the Nature Education Reserve. The county does contribute on an annual basis as part of the management plan, funds for the supplies associated with the management plan that the Conservation District carries out, but that's where we're at. We don't see a tremendous amount of change here, the only thing we've seen is 1% increase in that user, or that management agreement with the Conservation District since 2009. Twin Lakes is another one, it's kind of in the same boat with Power Island, it's a, it's a facility that lost its, I don't want to say lost its identity, because it's got a very strong identity in our community, but it's, it lost its identity for who comes to the park, and who brings the revenues into the park, as I mentioned a moment ago, related to some legislative changes back in 2008. So in '14, with $66,659, the general fund allocation will support 58% of power, of Twin Lakes. Between '11 and '13, that grew by 45%, however, since 2011, I guess it slowed significantly. As I mentioned, the revenues, revenue decline began in 2009 because of those challenges with camps. Next up is How Arena, we hosted 93,220 visitors in 2013. General Fund actually will not be supporting anything to do with How Arena. In fact, How Arena is going to generate $28,117 in revenues greater than expenditures in 2014. How Arena's a moneymaker for County Parks and Recreation. Between '11 and '13, this is exciting, the expenditures decreased by 41%, while our revenues have increased by 54%. That's created a 341% increase in revenues to our department, just for, just with that budget activity. Within How Arena, one of the things that's, that's helped with this growth is we've been able to operate How Arena more like a business, and it's created new opportunities within the facility, and we look forward to continuing the opportunity to ensure the long-term success of programs, of shows and events that continue, that happen at the facility, as well as creating opportunities for new programs, new opportunities to come in for our community. Meyer Property, this is pretty insignificant as far as visitors are concerned, I'd say less than 150 visitors in 2013. This is a, anybody not familiar with Meyer Property? Meyer Property is a little greenhouse that sits across the road from Keystone Soccer Complex. It's a 15-acre property that was donated to the county from Joe and Bessie Meyer, and right now, that farmhouse, back in 2011 or '12, County Facilities Management revamped that facility, revamped the house there, in order for it to be rented out. At the time, it was a discussion, it was a partnership between the Conservation District, Child and Family Services, our department, and Third Level Crisis Center. That's been changed a little bit, and now we actually rent that house to the Conservation District for 750 a month, and, and it'll actually generate more than $800 in revenues, it'll actually generate $8,000 in revenues, because we've budgeted for $1,000 in expenditures to go in to make any minor changes or any alterations or repairs to the house. This is a program that started in '13, and the lease is up for renewal in May of this year. So I've got some work cited here, if any of you commissioners- If any of you commissioners, as you go through this, I'm sure you're going to pour through this when you get home this evening, would like to review any of these articles. I have these, and I'm happy to share them with you. And that really wraps up my presentation. So if the commission has any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
I guess a technical question that I would like to probably more, I guess, refer to our administrator and Jen Seaman. Since we have, is my understanding, we have standing bargaining units that represent the individuals that supervise the pool, is that correct? Technically, we can't, my understanding, discharge
Can't change it.
The, the individuals and create something similar because we would be in violation of, like a bargaining contract in good faith, or those kinds of issues we'd be, we would be facing. So technically, that particular recommendation probably could not, at least, at least until the term of the contract, be discussed. Is that, would that be correct?
It can be discussed.
Yes.
But it is a part of the contract. You know, it's very clearly stated that full-time lifeguards, you know, the time in the pool will be covered by full-time lifeguards, and we can't, I think, Jen, help me out with the language. It's part-timers can't replace the full-timers, basically.
I think another point to that discussion, though, I believe, is that both of those full-time positions are currently vacant.
Correct.
So I believe if we were going to have a serious consideration about implementing this recommendation, this is the time to do it before we hire someone to fill those two positions.
Can we do that while the contract is still in force?
We can always have discussions regarding it, but the contract states that the full-time lifeguards are within the collective bargaining contract. We have on-call lifeguards at the, currently at the pool, and they can work up to a certain amount of hours and not be covered by the union contract labor agreement.
And I guess this might, might, might be more of a legal question, but getting to Commissioner Wheelock's point, we couldn't change the terms and conditions of that contract until it matured, is that correct? And there's a maturity date on that contract, on that bargaining contract?
Not unilaterally.
Or no?
Unilaterally. Not unilaterally. We would have to get an agreement.
There's, letters of agreement are, can be attached to a contract during the mid, middle of a contract. So if you have a contract that's set for a few years, you want to create a letter of agreement, it's basically an addendum to that contract.
Unless...
It would cause, it would, we would have to discuss it with the union. We can't oppose it unilaterally, as Dave said.
And all of these contracts are up in 2014, so we would have the opportunity to have that discussion now and in the immediate future. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sonny, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One, Jason, just to back up a little bit to your fourth slide, whatever, when you talk about the, the reduction of general fund appropriation to the Parks and Recreation Commission, I think it's important to note that that was done in a cooperative venture between the Parks and Recreation Commission. That wasn't top-down, we chopped your budget, you know, we, there were, had open discussions about, you know, what the needs were at the time. You know, I, you know, I don't want it to sound like we cut your budget and told you that you had to live with it, because I think they were cooperative discussions that we had with the Parks and Recreation leadership of where we wanted to be at, at that particular time, based on the needs of our community and also our fiscal constraints of accounting.
Sure.
Do you agree with that? Okay. I found it interesting that you don't mention Keystone Park. That is a sizable parcel of property that was purchased by Grand Traverse County with trust fund dollars, and some of us spent an awful lot of time in negotiations with the Meyer family to acquire that property and to develop those fields as part of a volunteer organization, T-Base, and T-Base continues to operate that park, but it is a county park, and, you know, I, I get a little frustrated from time to time in that the signage, the advertising for their soccer fields and all of those things, in direct violation of their lease agreement, do not denote that it's a county facility. It all, it always talks about the T-Base Soccer Complex. It does not acknowledge Grand Traverse County's participation in that. And to, you know, I could, I could check with the county treasurer, but I'm almost positive that the T-Base organization has not made their $1 annual payments
Yes, they have.
Have they recently?
I sit as the...
Okay, because I know for a long time they had not made
They do it annually.
Okay. But, you know, I think, I think Keystone is also a park that should be noted in here. And other than that, the only other note that I had is when you talked about Twin Lakes and we talked about the size of the other parks, Twin Lakes is a seven, one-hundred-and-seventy-five acre parcel of property. We actually develop and use about six to seven acres of that park. The rest of it is, is passive recreation, but it is, it is truly a one-hundred-and-seventy-five acre park that when we talk about what the park is, everyone looks at the lodge and the dormitory, and they assume this is the park in the Little Beach area. But it is a one-hundred-and-seventy-five acre parcel of property, which is very key to the community in which it sits.
Yeah, Commissioner Wheelock, thanks for bringing up Keystone. I have figures on all of our parks. In an effort to save some time, I wanted to bring up the ones that we have specific budget, budgets associated with. So the ones that I didn't bring up include Civic Center Meeting Room, or these are just Parks and Facilities. They have about seven thousand seven hundred and five visitors each year. The Meyer Property I mentioned, Vasa Trailhead, which has thirty-three thousand visitors. That's not a rounding number, it just happens to be how the numbers shake out, thirty-three thousand visitors to the Vasa Trailhead. We have at least five, five thousand four hundred and sixty-three to our Whitewater property, and now five hundred, or five thousand four hundred and sixty-three are specifically Iceman Riders. We have Bitner, which is included with, we've included their figures with the Natural Education Reserve, and the Keystone Soccer Complex, which has a hundred and forty thousand four hundred and fifteen visitors per year. So that includes the one-hundred-and-eleven thousand one hundred and fifty from T-Base, the five thousand two hundred and sixty-five visitors from North Star, and the twenty-four thousand visitors from their three big tournaments.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, yeah, Sonny, help clear up the, the record that Joe Meyer did not donate his property to the county. It was purchased through the MNR trust fund. However, I do want to note that after Joe saw that what was happening with his farm when they were building the soccer fields, he did donate the proceeds, and he gave, he gave it to T-Base. So Joe didn't keep anything out of his farm.
You know, and I, I would note, because I was part of that original negotiating team with, for the purchase of that property, and in the initial discussions with Joe Meyer, you know, he really had no real support of the soccer program. But as it evolved, you know, he was there with his purple golf cart on a very regular basis and was very pleased to see what was happening on his farm. And I had more than one opportunity to sit in his golf cart and ride around and talk about, you know, what it, what was being developed and the fact that these kids were having this opportunity that would have never been made available to them without his, his cooperation and the vision of those people that, that saw this as a possibility. So, you know, I recognize, you know, Joe's contribution, but, you know, it was, it was important that there were a number of other people that were out in front of this thing and, and seeing soccer as a growing recreational use in our community when, you know, most of us at that time still hadn't heard of it. Since that time, I've spent a lot of hours on soccer fields in one place or another from one side of the country to the other, so.
Charlie?
Yeah, I do. Getting back to other things rather than Mr. Meyer. Explain to me this eliminate Parks and Recreation Commission. Why you think that would save that money? Have you talked to the, our administrator about that? I'd like to know his feelings on that. And there are some other people from Parks here, they might want to say a word about it.
That is, that is something, and I, I think I shared this during my presentation, I was moving pretty fast there, that is something that I'm recommending. That is not, that is not the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and if Commissioner Kropel would like to speak about that, she's welcome to. I want this commission to know, and I, Parks and Recreation Commission to know that that recommendation isn't done out of spite or out of frustration with, you know, how I feel about the Parks and Recreation, the Board of Commissioners, or anything of that nature. It is, it's my understanding that this commission wanted to know about things that are, could be different in our department that could be changed with the least amount of impact to the users of our individual departments, and in our case, the parks. That's the reason I brought that up. I think Commissioner Kropel has a good vision for where the Parks and Recreation Commission is headed over the next year during her term as president, and that needs to be said. My apologies for not getting that in during my presentation, but that still remains as one of my recommendations to the commission. You asked about some clarification about those changes? Yeah, the thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars is direct, direct costs associated, associated with different line item expenditures related to the Parks and Recreation Commission. That sixteen thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars in, that would ultimately be indirect costs because we won't save that money in staffing, that's staffing costs, the time that I, our office manager, as well as our departmental secretary, put into Parks and Recreation Commission meetings. Each of our meetings, each of our, each of our Parks and Recreation Commission meetings cost on average about eighteen hundred dollars to hold just in staff time.
Appreciate that. I would like to ask Mr. Bendah, what his feelings on this are.
Parks and Rec Commission was appointed by the board and a statutory board, and unless the Board of Commissioners wants to do anything to change that, I mean, what Jason has said is certainly true, if you don't have one, you probably won't have meeting expenses and things like that, but you also use the, you lose its purpose, its statutory purpose. And that's about all I have to say about it. I mean, I, you know, this was, Jason mentioned this, I think, at
The November fourteenth meeting.
Yeah, at our budget, original budget discussions back in November, and, you know, he made that remark then, and he hasn't talked to me about it since. I, you know, what he's saying certainly is a fact. I wouldn't say it's my, it's certainly not my recommendation, and it's not something that, you know, I feel strongly about. It's his, it's his call, his department, his board, he's dealing with them every day. Let him say what he wants, but from my perspective, Board of Commissioners is pretty much in the driver's seat on whether we have a Parks and Rec Commission or not.
I guess my point would be some other departments of equal complexity do not have such a setup.
You're right.
Okay. And I would like to know if this current organizational chart we looked at at that giant meeting that a couple of us were at, it's pretty hard to follow, pretty complicated. It seems like there's a little disconnect as to how the whole thing works and fits together from the public perspective.
I think it's important to note that if you didn't have a Park and Recreation, you'd still be reporting to the Board of Commissioners, you'd still be preparing minutes and that data for that, so I'm not sure the cost savings would be that dramatic, and also we would take on a whole lot more responsibilities. We might even have to have another meeting just for Parks and Recreation.
We're always trying to build the Board of Commissioners responsibility. That's the idea.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, you know, I'm just stating
And too, but, you know, it's either one way or the other.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna, you know, I'm not sure there's that much of a savings when you start looking at that we're going to have to do, Jason would reporting to us, you know, with Dave as his boss, but I don't think there'd be that much savings because he's still going to have to prepare agendas. Still, we would have to go through those meetings to build and do that.
Yeah, and you're gonna, you're gonna be hearing a lot about parks issues that are right now are dealt with by the Parks Commission and discarded by the Parks Commission. I mean, they're, they're dealt with. It's gotta be, it's gonna be something on your agenda.
Yeah. So I have a question on facilities. You know, I don't see any dollars here as to how much facilities pays for maintaining all of our parks, because I know they maintain the Civic Center, they, Medley Park, some of the other parks that we have. I mean, we have, what, how many parks in Grand Traverse County that Grand Traverse County owns?
We have, we have eleven properties.
There's, I think there's more than eleven properties in there? So is it all townships that own all the other parks? Because I, I remember getting a book on all the parks that are available in Grand Traverse County, and it was hundreds of parks that we have throughout our community. And so, I mean, some of them are city, some of them are township, some are village, some are county, but county only has eleven parks. So, but some of those parks are being maintained by the Facilities Department, and I don't see that in the budget or even part of the cost allocations when we start looking at this, when we start doing all the dollars. But we also, you know, out of the three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, you know, you're taking that seventy, sixty thousand dollars for Twin Lakes is, comes out of that three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand?
Correct.
Yeah. So I mean, basically, you're taking money away from these programs to pay for Twin Lakes, and I think that's a challenge that some of us are, are struggling with when you start doing that, and we start, that raises red flags to us to determine what's going on. So, you know, you, you got three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand for your parks, but you also got whatever the facilities pays for their maintenance, of those mowing the lawns and taking care of them, and then also you got sixty-five thousand going to the Conservation District to help maintain our parks, plus you got twenty-five thousand going to Civic Center South, which doesn't come through your budget, but it's what we see as county commissioners that we're paying for all of our parks for our community. So I don't know if you have a figure from the facilities?
This is something that Commissioner Max Bauer and I have talked about several times or disagreed
I have, I have a spreadsheet on it.
That the, you know, our department is responsible for Fund 208. Facility Management is responsible for Fund 471, and that's something that Danny Brown would be better, you know, I, our department controls the funds that I've reported on today.
I understand that.
How, you know, how the county does its accounting for Facilities Management, that's up to you guys.
But I'm looking at the bigger picture.
Sure.
You know, how much money are we spending on our parks overall in Grand Traverse County? And we, and we got to put all those figures in there when we start looking at what we're doing for total parks in, in our community. Sonny, you had a question?
Well, I, you know, I have a couple of comments. Number one, Danny Brown's going to be the one that's going to have to give you the, the maintenance costs, you know, it's, it's that simple. It's, because Facilities Management does maintain our parks, but they also maintain all of our buildings and all those other things, and he will have a line item to deal with that and
And maybe we need to.
You know, maybe we need to have that discussion with Danny. You know, I think one of the things is to look at the overall benefit to the community as a whole to have Parks and Recreation available, and I think, you know, that's what Jason was alluding to in the beginning, I believe, and I, I think there's a lot of valid things for that. I'm a little concerned when we start talking about, you know, one way or the other about eliminating the Parks and Recreation Commission. I think there's, there's a purpose for it. However, over the last several years, we've seen multiple incidents where the Parks and Recreation Board, or Parks and Recreation Commission has made a decision, and this county board has overturned that decision. So I guess that's, that's the discussion that we as commissioners have to have, is if, I'm completely happy allowing the Parks and Recreation Commission do their job, but if commissioners are going to second-guess all of their decisions and overturn their decisions, then there's no purpose in asking these people to do due diligence if we're going to do it. And we've had some pretty strenuous discussions more than once over the last few years about, you know, decisions that were made by the Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, or Director, and then the county board cuts their knees out from underneath them and says, no, we're not going to do that. So, you know, if, if the, if the county Board of Commissioners firmly believes that the Parks and Recreation Commission isn't doing their job, then there's no reason to be paying them and asking them to spend their time and effort.
So Larry?
Well, just for the benefit of a couple of people on the commission, newer ones, if you want to compare Grand Traverse County to other counties in the state and other counties around the country, we're probably on the top end of the number of boards and commissions that we have created within the county to assist us with public policy, the assistance of running programs and services. of running programs and services, and to assist in the budgetary process for the county. So, we've got, you look at other county websites, not only around the state, around the country, they might have six or seven, and I don't know how many we have, we probably have thirty or so. And, so we've had, we've always had a rich tradition within Grand Terrace County, since I've started a long time ago, of a heavily citizen participation to assist us in the public policy and the budgetary process of running the county. And I, I like the model, I liked having heavens, have it heavy citizen participation in that process, I, I think it's, I think it's a, it's a better model than, than a smaller community, smaller participation model. So, I, for that reason, I'd like to continue to have the Parks and Rec Commission, I think they've done some good things with looking at Traverse City and Garfield Township, and joining some efforts there. I think some of the disconnects have been more of a philosophy that maybe in, in retrospect, we should've maybe had an annual meeting with them and gotten some discussion out on the table, rather than just letting it continue on to the point where we, they come back with the final recommendation, even though we, we know they're going in a certain direction, I guess we should've just, just taken it and just said, we need to have maybe an annual meeting on the direction of your planning, and your master planning, and your work plan for the year to make, you know, just so there's no disconnect, and I think that's what the new president has really indicated to us that she wants to do moving forward, so I'm, I'm, I'm feeling a little more comfortable about less disconnect moving forward in the future. So, yeah, there is, there could be a savings, but you, there could be a savings with the other twenty or thirty other boards that we got, that we're paying per diem on.
That's a good point, by the way.
Yeah, so, you know, either we're gonna have, we're gonna, either we're gonna have a-
Let's discuss it.
A big model with public, a lot of public input and process within the county, or we're not, and there is a price to be paid for that, with per diem and mileage and everything else, and meeting times, and I guess I'd like to keep the model in place.
Dave, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to change, change direction a little bit and talk about How Arena. The number, you throw out a number of twenty-eight thousand dollars that we actually did revenues over expenditures, but that doesn't include any facilities cost, does it?
Ask that question again, I'm sorry, I was-
The twenty-eight thousand dollar revenues over expenditures for How Arena that you've put in here?
Correct.
That doesn't include any facilities cost, correct?
Correct, and the majority, with, within How Arena, though, the majority of those facility costs are simply utilities, once How Arena gets turned out, back over to Parks and Recreation in roughly March fifteenth, there is some work that Facilities does in there, but it's not, the Facilities work inside How Arena, it's not nearly-
But it doesn't include depreciation of a Zamboni, for example?
We don't own the Zamboni.
Oh, okay.
Correct, we don't own the Zamboni, we own the ice, we own the compressors, and the, the power plant, the, the refrigeration plant for the ice arena, but I don't believe it's on any type of depreciation, and that's something that the Facilities Management has within their budget, and it's within their capital improvement plan for that to be replaced. I think there's a misnomer there, that's come up at this board a few times from my conversation with Danny, because it's identified as an ice machine, and the commission believes that that means it's the Zamboni, and in fact, when you see that in Danny's capital improvement plan, what the ice machine is, is the compressors and the refrigeration unit, not the Zamboni.
What's our relationship, what's our contract, can you tell me a little bit about our contract with, with ICE?
Yeah, we have a contract for an eight thousand dollar a year contract for them to manage How Arena on our behalf from roughly mid to late August through the middle of March each year. We receive eight thousand dollars in revenues, and we split the utility costs during that six-month period with CenterICE, and I think the, I may transpose these figures, the electric, I think, is forty percent paid by the county, sixty percent, sixty percent the county, forty percent How, or CenterICE, and then water is the opposite.
Or vice versa.
But also on the hook for replacing the bleachers, is that-
The bleachers is a, that's a significant cost, and we are on the hook, within the lease that we have with CenterICE, they're not obligated to make any major repairs inside How Arena, that's something that's, the county is responsible for.
Chris?
And that building does need some significant repair.
It was identified by the Michigan MMRMA as needing significant repair.
I must apologize to Chris, because I've been looking the other way and haven't really been paying attention to her raising her hand, so I wanna give her some time to-
That's all right, it's fine, I, I wasn't-
Thought she had a cold, she was just trying to get you a drink.
Understand you good.
Yeah, we'll let her over there, because she's contagious.
Yes, I'm contaminated. You know, I, I think it's important for the commissioners to know that while the park's budget is three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, this county board, and it's important for the public to know that we spend over a million dollars a year on our parks. It, it's just a simple fact, when you add the maintenance and the utilities, and the capital expenditures, it's over a million dollars a year, we are not shortchanging our parks, and I don't want the public to think that we are. The other thing I wanted to say was a, a comment that, to Sonny, and it's just a female thing, Mr. and Mrs. Meyer.
Okay.
It was Joe and the boys, as far as the negotiation part, so that's what I had to deal with.
I'm sure she had a say. Jason, you pointed to programs, and you said sixty-nine thousand dollars, sixty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars was one revenue source, and that, at the low end that you looked at, the high end was three hundred and forty-eight something. What was the subsidy for those, do you have that?
Give me a, give me a moment to pull up that document, and I can share that with you.
That's if we hired, that's if we hired a recreational programmer.
Well, in, I, I've done research, and I cannot find where programming exists, that it is not subsidized generally by mileage dollars, it just isn't, but-
So, yeah, sure, so-
Jason may have different information, so I'm asking.
I just did a very quick, I reached out, I wanted to see who I could get ahold of in a very short timeframe, and I spoke with folks in Byron Townships, Southeast Livingston County Recreation Authority, Oxford Township, as well as Sterling, the city of Sterling Heights. And what I asked them for, and this is how I came to that, those figures, I asked what their salary was, and part of this is from an old, from a study I did in trying to figure out the costs associated with the programmer, so what they did is those, those four organizations gave me the salary for those employees, they gave me the, I, I plugged in what the county's benefits were, that way, that, that's an even figure, to derive the total expenditures with having that person as part of, part of the, to have that person employed. Then I asked those four departments what the total revenue, what the total revenue was brought in from those programs, I said, are you, are these programs revenue positive? So is the revenue, are the revenues in all of these programs greater than the expenditures? And in all four of these situations, and this was a very quick study, they were all revenue positive. So, there are two programmers in Byron Township, their total revenue for those two recreation programmers is one hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, their total expenditure is one hundred twelve thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, so their employee cost is that one hundred and twelve figure, for a net revenue of seventy-five thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. In Selkra, Southeast Livingston County, their sports manager, his job is just sports, just running baseball, softball, basketball, so he would do the jobs of, and I'm not encouraging this by any means, but, you know, he would do the jobs of, gee, and I don't think he does hockey, but he would do the jobs of the YMCA, T-Bays, Pop Warner, T-Bay, or Tags, Little League, and American Legion, this is one person. The total expenditures, he has a thirty-five thousand dollar salary, if his benefits are twenty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, total expenditure fifty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-nine. Total revenue from his program, and this is a rounded figure, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a net revenue of three hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars, so he's the high end of the spectrum. In Sterling Heights, they have a thirty, a three-quarter FTE, Recreation Specialist, that position is on the lower end, the lowest end of the scale, salary of thirty thousand dollars, no benefits, total revenue, and this is a rounded figure, is about a hundred thousand dollars, it's eighty thousand from, eighty thousand from actual program revenues, but another twenty thousand from partnerships and sponsorships, that this person actually seeks out in order for, to have sponsors for their events to bring the cost down. So, in all, their total revenue is a hundred thousand dollars for a net revenue for the Sterling Heights Parks and Recreation Department, sixty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-eight. There are several departments out there that I can ask this same information of, the challenge with this, you know, as we've just discussed, you know, our funds, you know, part of Parks and Recreation is paid for by Facilities Management, in Sterling Heights, they budget differently, so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, Oxford, they do it differently, Selkra, they do it differently, each of these individual departments. So, if this commission wanted more figures related to that, you know, with a little more time, I could probably come up with a decent number of figures.
No, I, it, I was just curious, and I appreciate the additional information. Regarding Easeling Pool, when you say Easeling Pool hosted eighty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-three visitors in twenty thirteen, I know you used to count, and I think that's wonderful, I hope it goes up, and I, and I really believe that with your freshman water safety instruction cla, classes, you know, I, I really think that that's gonna increase participation. But the way you used to count, and I don't know if this is any different, but you told me this a few years ago when I was questioning the counts, that, for instance, if my husband, who, when he's in training, swims six days a week, when he's training before a race, he sometimes trains twice a day, right now, he's homesick, he's flying to Florida this weekend, and he's training, training for the Canadian Nationals down there, but he used to be counted, he would be counted six times every week, times four weeks, that's twenty-four, he would be count, he would be twenty-four of those people, and when I came with him, I was twenty of those people.
Yeah.
Is that how this number was derived?
It was, that's, that was the disclaimer I gave at the beginning, if we have someone that uses the park, one person that uses the park fourteen times, in this case, I use Kathy as an example, she's counted fourteen times.
Okay.
Because she gets in the pool fourteen times.
I misunderstood you, I'm sorry, I thought you said swimmers are counted for every five times or something, because of you changed the chemicals, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I'd say it was the cough medicine, but it's non-drowsy, non-alcohol, and I think that does my questions, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions, Sonny?
And this probably is a question that I should've asked, I should call you and ask, but anyway, I'll ask it anyway. I had some people contact me the other day that they had purchased on your Up North Live coupons or something or another, for swim lessons for their daughter, and apparently, since that came out in January, there hasn't been, I think it was January or December, there hasn't been any lessons for that age group posted, will, will there be more classes between now and spring before that coupon expires? 'Cause I think the coupon's only good for like sixty days, or something like that, they were concerned that, they, you know, they spent the money for this coupon, and there hadn't been any classes for that age group available that they could do, and-
Yeah, have them contact me, we have lessons to start again in mid-March.
Okay, well, I think that was, I think that was it, it was, you know, it was January till by the, into February, that, that coupon were, was scheduled to expire, and there were not any lessons in that age group posted.
Unless they receive, unless they're talking about one that may have expired in January that was purchased in two thousand thirteen.
Oh, this was purchased in January.
Yeah, those are, those are good for six months, I believe, so, if they have an issue getting into a class, just have them contact me, or just send me their information, I'd be happy to reach out to them.
Other questions from the commissioners? Dave, Dean, anything? Okay. By the way, you asked a question when you first started, whether or not commissioners are willing to close the pool.
I didn't ask that, that was Chuck, but I'm interested in your answer, thank you, Chuck.
I don't, I don't-
Everybody said, no, we don't wanna close the pool.
Doesn't say we won't, just says, you don't want to.
Yeah, I don't think that's-
Everybody didn't say that.
I don't think that's our decision, that's the Parks and Recreation Board's decision, they're the ones that have to answer that question, because they're in charge of our Parks and Recreation, unless we decide to change whether or not we want to become the Parks and Recreation Board. So I think it's really important to note that they're the ones-
Unless we're gonna want to take our prerogative and overturn their decision like we have in the past.
Well, let's hope not. Dick?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, everybody didn't say whether they wanted to close the pool or not, and I certainly don't want to, having been one who lost my best friend to a drowning, and I couldn't save him, and I used to teach lifesaving, no, I don't wanna see it closed, but I would like to see it come, and like everybody agreed, they'd be willing to pay a little more to keep it open, and that would, that would help my decision, but, no, I don't wanna close it. But on the other hand, you know, we've, we've seen as much as, what, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we went in a hole one year, and, you know, and that's, that's a tremendous amount for one thing, so.
Yeah, I too would not wanna see the pool closed.
No.
I see the challenge between our board and your board, is whether or not we provide recreational opportunities, rather than just managing our parks, and that's the discussion that we are probably gonna have more discussion on in the future than we'll ever have on anything else that you're gonna propose.
I only have one other question.
Go ahead.
On the pool.
Go ahead.
Okay, with the proposed opening of the Y pools, I believe there's two of them in process right now, or just one, I don't remember, but, have you given any thought or have, have had dialogue with them about how you can interact and coordinate better in terms of what you're offering versus what they would be offering, so there's no conflict or competing, and then issues, and how we can probably maybe expand between the three pools, the ability for people to use their two pools and our, and our pool together?
That's a, that's a great question, Commissioner, I'm excited that the YMCA hired a new aquatic manager, probably a month ago, and five days into her tenure with the YMCA, she came, her and I sat down and we discussed how we can work together, it was her fifth day on the job, we're scheduled for a meeting again next week to talk about, you know, how we can work together. I think that's a great commission, or a great question, because both her and I, in our discussions, have, have both expressed how committed we are to ensuring that we have the proper swimming opportunities for people in our community. Very good.
Dick?
Going back to the pool, there, there is one thing I would really like, I saw somewhere that we had on our young generation, about thirty percent are learning how to swim. I, I think one of the goals for the pool would be to try for a hundred percent, because, and, and they're not learning, I got kids in my neighborhood, and I live on the lake, they don't know how to swim, they live right on the lake.
But they know how to play their video games.
Well, they can do that pretty good.
The YMCA has funding for two years for eighth grade students to learn how to swim, if I remember correctly, and they have funding already in place to build, provide swimming lessons for all the kids in the eighth grade classes to build and do that, and I commend them for being able to do that, and also the funder, who decided to put that in.
That's too old.
I wanna comment on the, on the YMCA's website, which says that their mission is to teach every child in Grand Terrace County how to swim, so, it's, and they have a teaching pool, they are building for that very purpose, separate from their lap pool.
And we can be collaborative with them and provide that services for everybody, so we don't have to be the sole provider for it, we can be, we can be a, a big, a player in that whole process, and I command you, commend them and you for getting together and talk about common issues and how we can work together. Other questions?
One more thing, I, I think eighth grade is too old.
It is.
Yeah.
I can remember my grandma couldn't swim with stroke, and she taught me when I was three, and all, she just went like that, and pretty soon her hand was gone.
Yeah, Charlie?
I don't know if it's been announced or not, but Jason Jones has been elected for next year's president for the Michigan Parks and Recreation Association, I think it should've been talked about before, but I would applaud him for that, I think it's a-
I think it's a real honor. It says a lot for our county.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Jason? Jason, good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your employees and all the work that they do out there. I mean, we couldn't do the services without them.
That's great to, that's great to hear. I'll pass that along to them.
Does Alicia want to make comments?
Does what?
Does Alicia want to make any comments?
Oh, well, I'm not going to publicly, unless you want to.
Well, as the president of the Parks and Recreation Commission, I thought we'd give her an opportunity.
Do you want to say something?
As part of this, if she chooses to.
Well, the director invited you up there, so.
I see this, I see how it is. Herb invites you up, and you come up, and you have nothing to do.
You want to stand next to you, or no? I don't care. I've got my notes, and they're on a small phone, and I'm blind, so I'm just gonna, gonna let you know that. I really didn't want to speak as the president of the Parks and Rec Commission. I wanted to speak as, you know, someone that pays the taxes and uses the services provided by the county, and mostly as a mom of four kids, who I think have been in every single sport possible in Grand Travers County in the last 20 years as I've been a mom. Currently, I serve as chairman of Garfield Parks and president of County Parks, and I don't think there's any doubt my passion for parks. I do this for free. I don't apply for per diems. I don't take anything, and I do this as a volunteer. I'm the chairman of the County Business Development Team for Parks as well. But really, I just want to speak as a private citizen. There's three parts of government. There's the elected people, there's the paid staff members, and then there's those of us that are appointed. And for years, I sat at home yelling at the TV and reading the paper and thinking, "I don't like this, I don't agree with this," or my kids were involved in a sport and I wasn't happy with what happened. And one day, I could fill out a website application and be appointed, and I could be standing here with my views being heard. As much as I am for fiscal responsibility, I implore you to think of the role of the commission in all of the county departments, and that's representing the people. We aren't paid to be here, we aren't staff members, we aren't elected, but we're average citizens that don't have to run a campaign to be able to have our voice heard. I don't know about the budget numbers that Jason gave for the commission. I know that his and Marilyn and Christine's salary is allocated amongst each department in Fund 208, and I believe they're already allocated to the Parks and Rec Commission. So that's probably part of the 13,000. I know I'm zero of it. The additional 16,000 in staff, I don't know if that's repetitive from the allocated funds, so I would encourage someone to look at that. I also think that people want to be represented. Look at what happened when there was a misunderstanding and they thought the pool was going to be closed. And serving on a commission is another part of that. So the question is whether parks and recreation matters. I think I'm an example of why it matters. My kids flourish because of their involvement in sports and recreation. I've hiked every mile of trails in this county and used every single one of our parks. The bay is not going to shut down if the pool does. And I think it's silly to think that if one program shuts down, people will stop moving to Traverse City or stop wanting to be employed here. But that doesn't mean that parks doesn't enhance our need. Is it necessary? No. Is it mandated by county government and legislature? No. Is it a nice addition to our lives? Absolutely. And that's why I give so much of my time every month for Parks and Rec. People will always come to Traverse City because of the natural resources. So the question goes back to what Commissioner Lemkul said, is what is the role of government in parks and recreation? I don't care how you break down all of the spreadsheets and PowerPoints and commission meetings that we can all go to, it all boils down to this basic philosophy. Do parks provide a healthy environment for us? Yes. I can't imagine anyone would argue no on that. But the question is, is government's role to provide a healthy economy so that small businesses and not-for-profits can flourish and provide these programs? Or is it for us to provide healthy lives for people and step in and make that our place? I'm not one to decide how that is. That's the Board of Commissioners' decision for this county. You're elected, I'm appointed, huge difference. All I ask for you in your budget decisions is that you have a clear strategy going forward. Are we landlords, or are we program providers? I'm not going to tell you which one I think, and I didn't during our joint meeting, but what I asked you for was a clear strategy from the Board of Commissioners to the Parks Department and the Parks Director and the Parks Commission. There's frustration for our commission on the budget because facilities management isn't included in it. We don't know how much it costs to run our parks. Maybe the director does and the staff. We personally, as a commission, don't know. And so when you see numbers, it's difficult to know what these parks actually cost us. And I, I really feel bad for you guys having to go through that budget because it was hard for us to understand it. How Arena is a moneymaker, in my opinion, because we contracted out, just my opinion. I think that's something that our county needs to look at. Twin Lakes is a whole different story. I, as part of the, or as the chairman of the Business Development Team for County Parks, and Twin Lakes being our topic, we're thinking outside of the box this year, and I want everyone on the board to as well. It's not just as easy as eliminating a caretaker. Let's look at completely different ideas for the parks. I don't have any of these answers yet, but I will follow whatever guidance the boards gives. I agree with Commissioner Wheelock. We don't need to exist if we're just going to create a resolution and have it overturned. So that's why I asked, and I know that you're on vacation, couldn't go to the joint meeting, but believe me, I would have been too. But I think it was really clearly spoken between the two boards during there, that we just want to move forward in the same, the same philosophy. So basically, I'm asking you just to have a clear answer. Are we program providers, or are we landlords? I promise you, our commission will move forward under the philosophy that you dictate the best. Chuck, if you could turn off the timer on the phone. I'm not in public comments, so I get more than three minutes. That's it. That's it from the commission. And if you choose to eliminate us, I understand. Just think about the role of the citizen in the board.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of that. I have one other discussion item that we need to talk about, and Chris Kramer has said our final budget discussions will be coming toward the end of this month, on the 26th, I think it is. And she would like to know, where do we want to go from there? For our first meeting in March, what would you like on your agenda? How would you like to proceed with these discussions?
Hang on.
Sonny?
Well, I think, you know, from at least my previous discussion, I believe what we need to have is, after, you know, these presentations by the departments, I think we need to have a, just a frank discussion amongst the seven commissioners as to whether or not we have all of the information that we need, or whether we need something from a specific department. I, you know, I think we've gotten an awful lot of information through this process, you know, and I'm sure that there was, there's been a learning curve involved in it. And so I think what we need to have is just some very open and frank discussion amongst the seven commissioners, whether we believe we have enough information to make a decision on this 2014 budget. You know, keeping in mind that we've already adopted the 2014 budget. But we have the opportunity to amend it if we choose to.
We will anyway.
We will anyway, exactly. But I think the first, at least for our first meeting, and I don't see, in my mind, I don't see a purpose to schedule additional meetings past that first meeting until we see where that meeting goes to.
Okay. Anybody else? Charlie?
I would agree with that wholeheartedly. Originally, when we had this epiphany and passed this budget with a million-dollar shortfall, we were going to take this time to find out what we can do to minimize that. So far, I haven't seen much.
We've identified about 75 cents that we could cut out of our 2014 budget.
So what I would like to do is, when we have this next discussion, find out if this is worthwhile going forward. If it's not, let's move on.
Let's look at last year. Last year, we had a fund balance that we budgeted that we didn't use. So when you say that we're going to be a million dollars short, at this point, as far as I'm concerned, it's just not true.
I'm saying, we voted and passed a budget that showed a million-dollar shortfall with the option of borrowing $1 million from a fund balance to cover it. That was what the budget said. I don't know if we're going to use it or what the number will be a year from now either. That's what we're going forward with.
Actually, it's 1.7 million.
Yeah, it depends how you want to count for it. Exactly.
Actually, the budget's just a guide.
So my question is, is what other, do we, I think it's the 5th of March.
Yes.
That we'll have that meeting, and what would you like on that agenda? I've asked Chris to kind of give a synopsis of what these discussions were, if there was any recommendations, no recommendations, if there's increases, if there's decreases, and all that kind of stuff, and maybe put together a grid of what we had discussed so that we might have that to discuss with. And I think she's putting that together, or she can put that together when she gets back from vacation. And that might help us with some of our discussion. So Sonny?
Well, I think one of the things that we have to have the discussion, whether it's at that meeting or whether, you know, we find another time to do it, I'm not sure how close Dean will be to closing out 2013.
It's close.
We should be fairly close at closing 2013. Because, because that will give us an idea. We know what we budgeted in 2013. We know, and with Dean's report at the end of, you know, the audit process or through the closing of the 2013, we'll know how much we actually spent, what percentage of our actual budget we spent. Because when we, we use very similar methods by which we drew the budget for 2014. So if we determine that we spent 87% of the budget, okay, now if we in turn spend 87% of the 2014 budget, this is actually the real number that we have to talk about spending, coming up with.
Okay, Charlie?
I agree with you on that, but then you should make some adjustments around that, 87 to the 100%. And I get to the 100% then. This is what we have to talk about.
So Dave, do you want to lead that discussion then, on the 5th? To be able to kind of synopsonize what we're here and where we're at?
I've got, Linda's taking copious notes right now. We're boiling down all the kind of items of interest that came up during these meetings, and then we'll distribute those, you'll take a look at them, and we'll start the discussion with kind of where we, where we think we are with fund balance and where we think we're headed with some of the things that are in our future. I can say without equivocation right now that the effect of announcing that we had a million-dollar deficit, structural deficit, you know, in our last budget, not in this, this budget, not in the 2014, but the 2013 budget, we announced that we had that. I think departments have taken a serious look at spending, and they're holding the line as best they can. I think that's, that's showing positively in the fund balance that we're seeing at the end of the year. The hiring freeze and those kind of things didn't have time to take effect, so it was actually departmental efforts.
Larry?
Well, I like the idea of having a synopsis, just a short synopsis of some of the recommendations of impact on revenue and expenditures. So we just glance over those and see if those have interest or not. The main thing I'd like to take a look at from a staff perspective to report back to us is the impact on what has been related to us by the governor, that we would receive full funding and the dollar amount of revenue sharing, and how that would impact our budget versus the artificial tax recapturing that we've been drawing from. So I'd like to get analysis on that, and I also like to get an analysis on the remaining number of bargaining units that we would be discussing for the '15 budget during '14, and if they made the same concessions as the current ones did, what the save, what the cost savings would be to our '15 budget.
Okay. Charlie?
I don't know how you can do that, because you're going to have a labor negotiation in '15, it's going to change that. They can accept what has been caught, but that does not mean that that's going to tell you what the budget is.
Yeah, that's true.
Because, in my opinion, they will ask for a raise next year. That's what I feel. Based on what we did this year.
I think that, you know, that's a discussion that we'll have in closed session as to the budgeting process, and that's where that should stay.
The labor negotiating process. The philosophy will be held in closed session.
Also, I'd like to think about, you know, one of our goals was to put together a three-year budget. And I think that, you know, when do we want to start looking at that? Do we want to do that in March, or do we want to start, do we want to relate, delay it a little bit, do it in April or May? I mean, I just, I'm still going to push forward on that, to be able to get us in that situation. So do we want to have that as part of our March meetings, or do we want to wait, or when can you put that together, Dave?
That's a good question. I'm waiting for final actual figures, but I'm, I've already gotten the estimates rolled over. I mean, basically, before closing entries are made. So we've got pretty good numbers in there, and I'm working with that right now to try and put together different scenarios on what happens if revenue sharing is fully reinstated, what happens if, you know, our pension obligation drops instead of going up by a quarter of a million dollars. I mean, those two events, both of those things that they come to pass the way I think they're going to come to pass right now, you know, our million-dollar problem just got solved. That problem, last year's problem is solved because of, you know, it's $700,000 for revenue sharing, and it's a quarter of a million dollars. If it goes down instead of up, I mean, if it just stays flat instead of going up, that's a quarter of a million dollars. So you're, you're at a million dollars right there. So those are good things, and it's not to be downplayed, the significance of the revenue sharing and its impact on our ongoing budget problem. We looked forward into 2015 and saw that that was going to dry, it was going to go, you know, almost be cut in half because of the cuts that have been made by the legislature up to this point. And surprise, surprise, the governor says, "We're going to reinstate full revenue sharing for counties." What? Really? Wow. That'd be great.
So my question is, is when would we like to have that discussion, and when would you be able to facilitate that discussion?
I'm hoping I can get that together for your March 5th meeting. But, you know, what I've got pressing on me right now is I got to go to NACO.
Right.
Which takes me all the way up to the day before that meeting, from Friday. So I got the next week to do that.
So do we want to do, the 5th will be, you know, what do we need, you know, all that kind of stuff, we'll be discussing what we'd had the discussion about in the past. And then the following week, then we'll do, we'll look at the three-year budget and be able to start working on that, if that's.
That'd be the 12th.
That'll be the 12th.
And we wouldn't have a budget meeting.
On the Friday.
On the Friday, the 7th. Okay. That sounds good to me.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, do we want to continue leaving our meetings at 6 o'clock instead of 7 o'clock?
Yeah, well, we're doing the 3 to 5s.
No, 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 I'm talking about our regular board meetings.
No. I think as long as we're doing the 3 to 5s, and 6 o'clock is fine.
That's okay.
So we have a, we have a resolution that takes us through the end of March that all our meetings will be at 6 o'clock. Correct. So.
I think as soon as we, at such point as we have determined that we no longer need the 3 to 5 meetings, I would like to see our regular meetings move back to the 7 o'clock schedules as, as previously scheduled in, in practice.
Me too.
Personally, I think the staff out there would like to see us do it at 6, because it makes it more efficient for them.
I think the public out there would rather see us do it at 7.
Well, I haven't heard, I've not heard one way or the other as far as the public as to whether or not they do it at 6 or 7, and I'd be interested to hear that from the public as to whether or not they appreciate that. Charlie?
I'm with the other folks on this, going to 7 o'clock once we forget the specials. But I think we should encourage more participation by the public at these meetings. I think 7 o'clock does that better than 6 o'clock. A lot of people work.
Yep. Anyway, so that, that'll be another part of the discussion. Okay? Everybody comfortable?
The people I know say, "What? You have meetings?"
Yeah, well. Chris?
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second public comment?
Public comment. Public comment? Gup Sahr?
Chuck Corn, 4111 Summer Hill Road, Traverse City, Michigan. I like 6 o'clock better, first of all. Thank you very much. The other item was, I have a hard time understanding at the Board of Public Works, the Department of Public Works, the cost's entirely borne by the townships. And indirect costs, including a percentage of the administrator, finance director and treasurer salaries are figured into our costs, as well as the cost of the building and its maintenance and upkeep and utilities, like every penny. But we can't provide those figures for our departments. But I feel sort of like the redheaded stepchild, as they say. Or maybe you can't provide those at all. Probably a lot of work.
It's in a book. There's a book that gives you the numbers.
Okay.
Broken down spreadsheet.
So there are numbers like that?
Yeah. Yeah, it comes out of a real study done by professionals. Contracted out.
Good to hear. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corn. Anybody else for public comment? Please.